Mary.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a zoning board of appeals special meeting. The web based meeting held by a zoom. May eighteen, two thousand twenty-three, seven P M. We start with the roll call. Uh, Mister Delucia.
President.
Mister Sibitt.
President.
Mister Rivers.
Present.
Mister Ribero.
Present.
I'm Johanna, Chairman of the Board. Uh, okay, uh. We're gonna accept the minute from March nine, two thousand twenty-three. Mister Sibitt and Juan and Peter, they can accept those minutes.
I make a motion, accept the minutes from March ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh. The next regular meeting scheduled for June eighth, two thousand twenty-three. And now we, uh. I have a motion to hear. Application twenty-three zero six. Twenty-three zero seven. Twenty-three zero eight. Twenty-three zero nine. And continue. The, uh, public hearing twenty-three dash zero one.
I make a motion to hear applications twenty-three zero, uh, dash zero six. Uh, application twenty-three dash zero seven. Application twenty-three dash zero eight. Twenty-three dash zero nine and continued public hearing twenty-three dash zero one. For open, uh, public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, twenty-three. Dash zero six. Is, uh, was representing the applicant.
Uh, that would be made Mike Mizuko, professional engineer, representing the Philopakis's on this. Application which had been an earlier, uh, application for variance was denied on, on March ninth without prejudice. And if I can share my screen, I'll just walk you through the changes that we made on this reapplication.
Okay, here you go, Mike.
Excuse me?
I, I have to enable the share screen.
Okay, good.
There you go.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Still seeing it's disabled.
Oh.
Uh, Mary, cause you're share. You're sharing your screen, Mary.
All right, let's, let me try that again, sorry. There must be another op, there's the other option. Okay, it should work this time.
Perfect.
Thank you, thanks Juan.
Okay, this, so this is the survey map. That was resubmitted and I'm just gonna go to my plan, cause a little bit clearer to read and some, some of the stuff is in color. So, there were several variances. There was some pertaining to the attached garage. Here in the corner, none of that has changed under the new application. And under the previous application, the line of the addition and the deck was. In parallel to the existing line of the house. Along here, so the variances were. Fifteen to five point nine to the addition, which was the overhang. And that is still the case for this part of it. Only because the access to that room is gonna be through here. And then. Into the addition. And then we just had shown a landing and a set of stairs to get to the, to the rear yard. And so, the deck and the addition got reduced. From. As I said, the five point nine, that still stays the same, only for the access area. But. To the deck, it's now gonna be thirteen and a half feet, which is actually further, if I zoom in here, you can see that this is, this blue line. Is the existing open wood deck now, so. We're actually further away from the sideline. With the addition and the deck, and as far as any other changes, there weren't any, we didn't extend the deck out any further to the back. We didn't extend, didn't change anything on the north side towards, um, Park Avenue. None of that's, none of that changed, it was only just in this area. And in doing so, we reduced the coverage that we had requested from twenty-four point one percent under the previous application. And now twenty-three percent coverage. So.
I got a couple.
I'm sorry.
Uh, on, on this map, you're showing. Proposed deck. And proposed addition. And open deck was covered, I guess. But on the application, you have a garage set.
The garage, yeah, the garage still is still in the, under the application. That didn't change, that was under. That was, had, we had requested that under the previous application too.
Hmm. Okay, I wasn't seeing.
Okay, so, yeah, again, that, nothing changed there with regard to the size setbacks. Because I don't think there was any really big issues with that, it was mostly just along.
Is, is the garage behind the house, looks like?
The, I'm sorry?
The garage is behind the house.
Well, it's actually in front of the house right now.
If you are on Delta Avenue. You're gonna see the garage where, uh, what Pleasant Street, uh, Worcester Street there? No?
Uh, no, well, Worcester's down here, you're not gonna see the garage from there.
So how you gonna get to the garage, the driveway?
Well, right now, the driveway, yeah, there's really not much change, the driveway is right here now. So they're just gonna come in and turn right into the garage, doors will be facing south here.
So in the front, okay, I see now.
Yeah, and it's just pretty much slab on grade, one level.
Okay.
And as I said, the architectural, it, the concept of the architectures are, are exactly the same. Except for the reduction in the width of, of this area here, and we just, really just kept this just to be in alignment with the existing. With this existing wall here. And just ran that out. And shaved off about seven feet or so along here.
Mister Mizuko, I'm noticing on your map, go to, go to the garage. You have, uh, you have the variance from twelve point seven feet. To Delta and on the application, it says twelve point three.
Right, because I, usually what the surveyors do, they, they give you, cause we're going, I'm, my dimension is like right to the. Overhang and they usually allow a little bit for a gutter or, you know, cornice or some trim. So that's why we always, the, the surveyor, if I go to the other map, the surveyor's map. They, they usually allow for. A little bit of leeway in there for, as I said, for a gutter or things like that.
Okay, just checking.
Yeah, no, that's good question, good, good eye. So. If, uh, there's any questions, I mean, other than that, it's, uh, it hasn't really changed too much, but we did, as I say. Increase the separation distance on this side, which was the issue from, uh, the neighboring property owner.
The only other question I have is why does the proposed addition have to be so big? Which keeps your coverage over the allowable.
Right, but. You have, also have to take into consideration, I think I, I mentioned on the other, the, the previous application that the lot is. We're in an RA twenty, but the lot area is only eleven thousand five hundred, so we're much closer to a lot that's in the. Say the R eight zoning, which is eight thousand square feet. So if you kind of prorate it based on the size of the lot, the lot coverage is pretty much matching. The, the size of the lot compared to the RA eight and the RA twenty. And that's what happens when you get these really small lots in. You know, that's, that are in a higher zone.
That's all I have.
Now, how big that addition, twenty-four feet by twenty-four?
Twenty-four by twenty, uh, like twenty-five and a half.
Okay. Any other question from the board?
No.
Okay.
I have a question, yeah, uh, you said that that was twenty-four by twenty-five?
And a half, point six.
Mister Mizuko?
Yes.
Site plan here showing twenty-four by thirty-two feet.
That's probably taking into account the six and a half feet doorway is.
Okay, okay, all right. I didn't know if that was a misprint or not. So, just trying to confirm.
Yeah, that's, cause that, that really didn't change in this section through here.
Okay, I just, just wanted clarification on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, this is. Is this edit the, oh, the deck is.
Yeah, there's already a deck here now that's shown in.
But what, uh, uh, it look like you still have a picture window? In the house, you're gonna stay between the addition?
Right, it'll just get reworked, but it's, yeah, there's a, there's like a bay window there and then the kitchen is right. Well, kitchens are right in this area here.
I'm gonna take it out, open the, the addition or the addition gonna be?
No, the access would be through this.
What's that, it look like converting to a second, uh, to a two-family?
No, 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 not at all, that's not, that's not even permitted in, in the RA zones.
Yeah, but how you gonna go from the proposed addition to the main house?
Right, right through here.
But. Oh.
Yeah, they didn't wanna mess with what they had here because of the kitchen.
Okay.
All right.
Anybody else have any more questions? I guess we can have a. Motion to. Close it, if no more question.
All right, I'll stop my share unless there's any other questions.
No.
Mister Chairman, did you open it up to anybody against the application?
Oh, no, sorry about that, yeah. Anybody has, uh. And support this application? Anybody and support this application? Anybody in opposition to this application? Anybody in our position? I guess not, so everybody have. Okay. I'm wait for a motion now.
Make a motion to close twenty-three oh six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next application, twenty-three zero seven. Eighteen Lake Wha- Road. Anybody representing the applicant?
Uh, yes, Mister, Mister Wilenta is here. I'm just gonna un, he has to unmute himself.
Sorry about that.
Okay, and, and the homeowner is here as well.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right, you wanna tell us what to do, what you doing?
Um, yeah, we're looking to, the, uh, owner right now. Is, uh, fairly close to the driveway, looking to do a deck in the, in the front of the house. So he has an outdoor area, um. To sit outside and have views of the lake. Um, looking, looking for some, just a small platform to, um, access from the existing house. Um, looking to. Reduce the front setback. From, I believe, is it thirty feet? To the twelve foot. And the side setback needs to be brought from, uh, the fifteen feet and we're asking, uh, to bring it to nine. On the side yard, so it follows the existing house, the deck will. Stick out on the side to follow the plane of the exist, the existing house.
And that's for proposed deck, right?
Yeah. Just a platform with railings on all sides. Fourteen wide by sixteen deep.
Uh, can we have the, the map on the screen so everybody can see it?
I don't have it.
There you have it. You have, you have, yeah, can you put the map on the screen?
No, I can't do that as the host. Somebody else might be able to do that.
I can't figure, I apologize, I can, I've been trying.
All right, okay.
Get it.
All right, let's, this, let's discuss and see who wants to.
I mean, I could try, I don't know. You wanna give me permission, Mary?
I think every, I think anyone who wants to share has permission at this point. I'll just check, yes, it says multiple participants can share.
Okay, let's see.
Thank you.
You let me know what, you want, you let me know what you wanna see, Joe?
Well, I just want everybody to see it, so I don't know if you guys have. You know, any question? Whatever. I'm, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with that thing, uh. I just wanna know if the board have any question, they can see the whole thing now.
I have a question, uh, I made a site visit today out to the house.
Yeah, mate.
And my question is, are they going? Are they going to do away with the existing front porch that's glassed in?
No, no, that's gonna stay just the way it is, the, uh. The deck itself is actually gonna be a platform. Free standing platform, not attached to the house, just right up against the existing, um.
Over the driveway.
That's there. With access from the, uh, from that glass. Lasting porch, there's a slider right there.
Well, it looks like a deck would almost be sticking out in the road.
No, it's two feet short of the driveway, that's, uh, that's actually just a shared driveway there. Um, and we brought it in a couple of feet from the drive, from that driveway. There should be plenty of room there for cars and such to get by, um. I believe the neighbor's deck actually sticks out. Just as far or pretty close to.
It does, and, and if I may, um, it's, it's a private driveway, it's not a public road. Um, I don't know if that makes a difference, I'm just saying it's a shared road between three neighbors. So it was just repaved, paid for by our community, um, and. They've all consented and are on board with what we're doing. What we're trying to do, I should say.
You said it was two. Sorry, Mary.
Excuse me, just for the board members, excuse me, Juan, just for the board members, I do have three emails, which I can read into the record. If you would like me to, all in support of this project, so I'm happy to do, I'm happy to do that, but you go ahead, Juan, while I get them out.
Okay.
So I, I heard that it was two feet from the driveway. Um, I wasn't able to, uh, do a site visit. But I'm going to assume that this is a pretty narrow private road, uh. It, will this, uh. Uh, hinder any fire safety or, uh, emergency, uh, service? With their.
Yeah, there's.
Man.
There shouldn't be any issue, the, 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 the deck itself is actually gonna be back further than the, uh, curb of the road. Uh, the curb of the road, you can actually see it in the drawing a little bit, if you, if you can, um. On the bottom section of where the deck is, you can see where the curb of the road is and the deck will actually be set back from that. So, um, again, just to try to, not to hinder at all into what the existing area is. Um, it'll actually widen out a little bit once you get. Through that, that section to where the proposed deck would be. The road actually would be a bit wider in that area.
And if needed, if the board would like, I mean, we can pull it back a couple of feet too, that's not. You know, that's, that's not something that. Can't be done. But there's plenty of room for trucks. The house down the street is having, was having some work done and trucks are in and out there all day, so.
How, how, how big is that proposed deck?
It's fourteen by fifteen?
Fourteen by sixteen?
Yes.
Would, would you be open to expanding this more with, widthwise instead of lengthwise?
Well, I would, I would, I would, it would be easier to compromise on, if we're talking length, the, the, the direction towards the driveway. Um, it's easier to pull that back, the other side is just gonna be over where the garage is, if you, if you're at the house today, so. The driveway is what's gonna be covered by the deck. So it'll. Um. I think it would be more of a challenge to, to. To do something with that, that way than extending out just from where the post would be. So we can get the cars on. I mean.
I think we're at our, we're at our limit with the fourteen feet now. Um, and the further we go towards the, the property line over there, it lessens the area that you have, cause right now, I believe you can fit a, a car next to the deck.
That's right, no, yeah.
If we go any closer, then you won't, you'll lose that parking spot there.
Right. So fourteen wide. Instead of sixteen, if you're, if you, if you like, you know, if, if that's an issue, bring it back to fourteen by fourteen or something else, that, that would be, that would be just fine.
This driveway serves three houses, right?
Yes, well, there's four houses on this dead end, so. There's a house to my right, as I'm facing the lake, there's a house and two houses to my left.
And, but the houses that use the driveway is three or four?
One, four, four total.
Okay.
Counting, you know, houses on both sides of me, that's, that's what you mean, right?
Yeah, uh, yeah, three houses, it can never become a road up, above three houses, it's, uh. Um. It, you know, it could become a road if the, if you did it to the town standard or whatever, but. It's technically just a driveway when it's three, uh, three houses or less. That's, that's what, there's only two, two houses.
There's only houses past me, right?
Okay, yeah, so, you know, from that, it's really considered a driveway, like for a single house.
Right.
Yeah.
I had a question for Sean. Is, uh, Sean?
Yes.
If, uh, I don't know what, with, uh, which way the board gonna go with. But if they go with a fourteen by fourteen, do. We have to have them change the map or we can just vote it?
Um, you could, Mr. Chairman, you can have a revised map, as long as the intrusion isn't increasing the variance request as far as making it more. It's.
Clarify this for the board, so.
Yes, so, if, if you chose to, Mr. Chairman, you can make it less if the applicant is open to that, and then we'll just get a revised plan and update the map with the approved variance.
Well, okay. All right, anybody have, else have a question now?
Nope.
Everybody happy? Anybody in favor of this application?
Hi, Mister Hannah?
Yes.
Do you want me to read the letters into the record?
Yes.
All right.
I'm sorry, we got, uh. Uh, moved away from that, you were gonna read them before, so go ahead.
Well, now I guess is the time, cause these are all in favor. Um, this is a letter, uh, addressed to John Wilenta, the builder. It says, hi, John, my name is Mary Ann Howe, and I live next door to Leo and Grace in McGrath at twenty Lake Road. I am writing to give my full support for the permit application to grant a deck variance, which is adjacent to my property. If you have any questions regarding the matter, please contact me and she, um, provides her phone number. The next one is dear Mister Wilenta from Joanne Calendrino. I support the variance that Leo and Grace McGrath have requested for a deck for their home at the above address. If you need any further information, please email me. Uh, Miss Caladreno lives at sixteen Lake Road, so I don't think she's, uh, well, she might be a direct neighbor, okay? And then the last one. Is, um, an email to the Board of Appeals. I am a neighbor of Grace Anne and Leo McGrath, one of four homes which share a private driveway on Lake Road. Wish to express to the town that I have no objection to the proposed deck, which he wishes to install in his home. I am two houses away at twenty-two Lake Road. And the adjacent properties at sixteen and twenty do not object either. Sincerely, Jean Brody.
Okay. Uh, anyone in favor for this application? Anyone in favor? Anyone in opposition for this application? Anyone in opposition? No. So we need a motion to close twenty-three zero seven?
I make a motion to close twenty-three oh seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh. What happened?
I stopped sharing, but somebody's sharing their screen.
Oh. When it, the application twenty-three zero eight.
Uh, Mister Hannah. Mister Hannah, could we wait till we get, um, a cleared screen here? Does it? Does anybody recognize this screen?
This is crazy, I don't know what happened here, I thought only mine.
Philipacos, uh, Petros.
Huh?
Uh, Petros Philipacos is, uh, sharing the screen.
Yes, he has to close it.
Have to close, oh, wow, now.
All right, we're back.
Okay. Now we go back to, uh. Application twenty-three dash zero eight, twenty-one Marion Street. Anyone representing the applicant?
Mister Chairman, I do not see the representative for the applicant.
Okay, so we'll move to the next one and then we come back in case you're short.
All right, thank you.
Application twenty-three dash zero nine. Fifteen grand if you drive, eruzu. Ever see? Anyone representing the applicant?
Yes, I am, uh, Lucia DeMello.
Yes. Can you tell us what you're doing there?
Uh, yeah, they're looking to, um, change the front setback from forty to twenty-two. Um, to have a six by thirty-foot covered front porch put in. And then to reduce the side setback from twenty-five to six, six feet, six inches. To have a garage, um, a twenty-two point sixty-seven foot by twenty-six foot, two-car garage. Um, with a proposed addition above the garage.
Addition above the garage?
Yeah, they're looking to increase the square footage of the home by putting, um, a bedroom above the garage.
Uh, how much you increasing the square footage of the home?
I honestly don't know, I know that they submitted the plan, I was asked to step in at the last minute for them, um, they're going to.
So you have a plan?
Yeah.
You have a plan, you can put on a screen for us?
I cannot, because I do not have the plan, I know it was submitted together with the application. But it would be just the, the same, um, area of the garage, so the twenty-two by twenty-six basically. Is what would be the footprint above the garage as well. What does that follow? What does that follow?
Well, um. For me, I like. I like to see a a a plan. And I don't know, but I think the rest of the board would like to see it, too.
I made a slight visit out there today. And my only question is if they built build a two-car garage, are they gonna get rid of the motorhome that looks like it's a junk heap? Out in the driveway?
Yes, they would need to because that's where the space of the garage is gonna go, so yeah.
And also, if they're gonna build two stories, are they gonna keep the uh the tall um? Trees that on the border between their house and the house next door? Otherwise, they're gonna be looking over into their neighbor's yard.
So you're I'm sorry, the question was, are they gonna keep the tall trees that are there?
Yes.
My guess is yes, um, as long as they're not interfering with the footprint of the addition. I don't think they had any plans to cut anything down that's there.
Okay.
I I I. Go ahead, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say that the the square footage of the additional space above the garage looks like it would be about five hundred and seventy-two square feet. Because that's basically the footprint of the um two-car garage.
Uh, just to confirm that, that you're saying that the proposed two-story addition is staying within the footprint of the current garage?
No, there is no current garage, so the the request is to change the setback so that they can have a garage put in. And then the bedroom above that that they're proposing would be the same area of the proposed garage, which is. Uh, twenty-two point sixty-seven by twenty-six feet is the the garage space.
That?
Oh.
And how?
No, that's not the right one. Grandview Drive.
Okay.
That's not grand. Yeah, the next one.
That's right, we skipped one.
Sean, and a quick question. In question of this proposed uh living space above the garage, is there anything that? We need to know as far as. Regulations and this being okay?
Um, yeah, I mean, putting a second story over garage, there's no, there's no issue with that as long as it's a shared living area with the existing dwelling. So they have to incorporate the second story into the existing dwelling. Uh, they wouldn't be able to be separate entrances and exits into it, so that would be one of their requirements.
All right, for the applicant, is that going to be incorporated?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And the number, just to to point out as well, the number of bedrooms in the home would not change either. Um, it is currently uh three bedrooms and that's what they would be keeping it at. It's just that they would be building that, including that space as a larger bedroom. And then um just keeping the other two bedrooms.
Uh, quick question, is there, since there is no existing garage? Would it, why would it, uh, would it be possible to add this addition to the other side of the house where it looks like it might be less conforming than that?
Uh, I don't, I don't believe so because it slopes down on the other side and then that would require also having to put in a new driveway. That's where the driveway already is. And I do know that the neighbor on that side, um, they had spoken to them and they did not object to having um the garage placed on that side. Close to them.
Uh, do they do they have approval for septic for for four-bedroom home? Are they gonna change that or?
No, it's a three-bedroom. They're gonna keep it a three-bedroom. They just um recently.
You're saying they make and have a larger bedroom above the garage? You change your mind now?
No, that's what's good.
They're they're still making a bedroom above the garage, but right now they have two of the bedrooms are downstairs. And they're gonna turn that into an open space family room concept, and then they would have the two bedrooms, so they would have the three bedrooms all upstairs.
But what what size the the house is? How many square feet that house?
Does it show there on that? And I don't know off the top of my head here, um. And unfortunately, I was asked to step in at the last minute, so I don't have access to the actual. So basically, just what it shows there is the proposed.
Yes, twenty-two. Sixty-seven by twenty-six feet, that's large addition for second floor. You know, that that could be two bed, two large bedrooms anyway, but. You know, we need to see a better map with dimension, square footage and. Everything else. That's my. My feeling. I don't know about the rest of the board.
Well, the size, I, the size of the addition was just basically so that they could fit in a two-car garage. That's the reason for that size.
Yeah, but you for you asking for two-car garage, we understand that, but the addition above the garage, that's. That that makes the whole situation. We need to know more information.
Okay, well, what additional information do you need them to supply? I mean, and again, the reason for increasing the footprint of the house is for. They're facing a hardship because when they first purchased this house, there was only two of them. There's now four of them living in this house, which has become tiny. And based on the current prices in the area, they're finding it difficult to sell and then be able to afford to buy something else. So that was the reason that they decided to try to do it this way.
That's fine, but for us to vote on something, we need to have more information. You know, how many square feet the house, what size the lot is, and the addition you're making. Whether it's gonna be a bedroom, gonna be a living room, what what's this they doing? Because when you move from three-bedroom to four-bedroom, you need to upgrade your septic unless you have engineers. Can can provide more information, say, in the septic adequate for that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just to clarify, they are not increasing to four bedrooms. The house will remain a three-bedroom house. They are simply changing the location of the two bedrooms that are on the bottom floor into one open room. And then there will only be three bedrooms. They're not increasing the bedrooms in the house. They're not asking for a four-bedroom, so there is no necessary change to their current septic system.
Well, they will make the change. They open a room downstairs before they get the the CO for the for the whole addition, right?
I'm sorry, can you just repeat? I didn't hear part of the question.
You say they're gonna open two rooms downstairs together. That will be done, that will be done before they get CO for the addition.
No, it what they are trying to do is see if they can get this variance, and then they will go in and get permits to do whatever they need to do. Um, with the addition and with whatever else they're planning to do in the house in one stop.
That. My question for you is if they get the permit, if we approve it, they get the permit. They make the addition, they get a CO from the city hall, that this addition was done properly for code and everything. Now, does that opening of the two rooms together and the first floor is gonna be done before they get the CO? Not before the permit. I know you're gonna go for it.
No, they're not gonna make any changes to the house before they know that they can put an addition in and that they have a permit for it. There will be no changes at all.
No. I I I wanna repeat that again for you. If we approve it today, you have a permit and they make the addition. Now, when the addition finish, they need, they have to get certificate of occupancy from the city. Is that opening of space downstairs gonna be done before that or no?
No, it is not.
Okay, so I I I like to see another map. We provide more detail than it, the size of the house. And what you're gonna do be before when 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 the addition is done, because we, I like to see. How you're gonna open the room downstairs to each other?
So you ba, so I just wanna make sure I understand the request. So you wanna see the architectural plan or a plan of what they're actually proposing to do? To change to the existing living space?
Yes, sometimes.
As well, as well with the addition.
Yeah, and then we we have to see how they're gonna go to this addition from the main house, from a separate entrance. Uh, everything have to show there, so we know what we're doing here. Because what I ask you, I don't think you understand the question before. The, we're not asking you to change the house before you finish your addition. But once the addition done, they they will get a certificate of occupancy from a city. That everything is done in according to per plan submitted. Now. That, but they have to open a space downstairs before they can just make. Big addition above the garage and leave the two room together downstairs. That's I'm not comfortable with that. I don't know about the rest of the board.
Does does this house have a second floor right now or no?
It's a cape, so it has, it does have a a second floor on top of it, yes.
So Joe, just to, you know, it's only like eight hundred and fifty square feet. If you look at that porch, it's thirty feet and the and the garage addition, let's say, is at twenty-four feet. You know, you're you're about, the existing house is about eight hundred and fifty square feet, so by the time you put hallways and bathrooms, I know what you're saying, that. You could, I don't know that you could fit four bedrooms and all that on a on that footprint.
But listen, you have two bedroom downstairs, you have one bedroom upstairs, and you put an addition twenty-six by twenty-five. That that's a huge addition. So you have four bedroom right there. If you wanna vote for it, go ahead. Uh, I need to see, I need to see, I need to see information myself because she not willing to open. She said she wanna open a two-room downstairs, but they're not gonna do it. Before, uh.
Well, the the house currently, and and that's fine, I understand needing more information, but, you know, the the two rooms are pretty small, they're pretty tiny. And one of the rooms right now is.
Fine, pro- provide them in the map like it's a nice, it's room eight by eight, nine by nine, a house thousand square feet, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, whatever. Addition is uh eight hundred square feet, whatever it is, and then we can, we can vote on it and will you be done? Most most our vote, our vote is gonna be as per plan submitted. And. You know, we can't vote on what you say, and the plan is not clear. Because if you, if you're gonna make a four-bedroom, go ahead, make four-bedroom, but we have to know about it. We're not stopping you from making four bedroom.
They're not making a four.
They're not making it, yeah, there, we can't do that because they're not going to change the septic to make it into a four-bedroom. So it has to remain a three-bedroom.
So I think what Joe's asking is, can you provide a sketch showing?
Sure, I'm sure, um, yeah, I'm sure they can, a sketch of what you're, what they're proposing that the inside of the house will look like once. The two-story addition is there, correct? Yeah.
Yeah, up and down.
Okay, and is is there a timeframe or would this have to just be put on a new agenda?
We can put a new agenda, it's up to you, whatever, we can get the paperwork done, it's fine.
So, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, are you asking her to continue the application to the next meeting and submit a set of floor plans?
Yeah, we're gonna, we ask her if we'll continue if she can provide the documentation by that time. It's gonna be June. I think June, June eighth or ninth.
Eighth.
June eighth, can you do that?
Uh, yes, we're, are you asking for architectural plans or just a drawing of it? Because I've heard it kind of both ways, so I just wanna make sure.
Well, uh, eventually they're gonna make architectural plan, right?
Right, I'm just, but for the purposes of getting it to the next meeting, are you just looking for a proposal of what they're planning to put in there? Basically, a sketch?
If if you make a sketch, I can accept it with this plan, but. It's gonna be any approval is gonna be as per plan submitted.
Yep, okay, understood.
You don't make a sketch, it doesn't work.
Understood.
So, if you can, if you can make it, uh, with architect, that'd be fine. You are all set. We approve it as per plan submitted and you're all set. Don't have to go back and forth.
Okay, I I think their concern is probably more of having to spend the money to get an architect to do a full-blown plan without knowing if they're gonna be able. To even make this work on with the variance, so I think at this point, it would probably be a sketch of what is proposed.
Mr. Chairman, the uh, there wouldn't be an architect requirement for the single-family home uh from the building department, so I think with a detailed sketch. Uh, which do the job.
I just wanna have to be aware that we approve by per plan submitted, so, right? That's fine with me, so you'll be all set, we'll continue at uh next meeting, June eighth. Are you okay with that?
Yes, but uh, Mr. Chairman, can you let me know when those that sketch would have to be um in for that to be on that agenda?
I think Mary is gonna let you, you'll be all set, right?
Mr. Mello. Yes. Excuse me, excuse me, Mr. Mello, if you or Andrea um contacts the office on Monday, I'll let you know that.
Okay, perfect, I'll do that. Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right. All right, so. Mr. Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion for continuation?
Yes, sir.
All right, I make a motion to continue application twenty-three dash zero nine fifteen Grandview Drive.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Uh, hi, uh. Let's see now, is the representative for twenty-three zero eight in yet or no?
Uh, let me, let me check for you. There's no one in the waiting room.
They waiting?
That, I said, there is no one in the waiting room.
Okay, so we're gonna go to. Continuous public hearing, twenty-three zero one, nine Charlotte Way. Uh, anybody representing the applicant?
Uh, hi, I'm Stephanie Fox. I'm the architect for the project and the homeowner Dave Burgis Burgis is also here. If you wouldn't mind, I'll share my screen and Dave will start now. Tag team with him.
All right, go ahead.
Okay, so uh, this this is the zoning application and maybe Stephanie, you could step through to the. Uh, to the uh drawing of the site. Where this a continuance uh of the hearing we had a couple of months ago. Where the board requested uh some more information about exactly what we're gonna do, not not unlike the conversation uh previous to this. Uh, to have a little bit more detail, so uh we're seeking a a variance on the side yard setback. From forty feet down to uh twenty-five feet, so we could build proposed to the uh proposed addition. Uh, yes, Stephanie, I got another view of it right on my screen. Maybe I can grab it back from you.
This one?
Yeah, I got it a little bit bigger. May I just grab it from you?
It's just bad graphed. I have, I I'll go to the other side.
I got, I got you, I got you. I'll I'll steal a share here. You guys got that?
Yep, there we go, there.
Okay. So uh, the the lot in question is part of this uh pine ledge subdivision. It's lot four. This is uh today called Shoreview Estates. It's a Candlewood Lake community of twenty-four homes. All uh, uh, you know, built off of East Pembroke Road here. So this is my lot here, lot four. This is the drawing that Stephanie was trying to to show that I embedded in the application. Uh, showing the existing lot. Since the the A two from the city. And then here's the. Uh, proposal that Stephanie helped draw. So this is existing driveway. Going to a an existing two car garage. And uh, all of this here behind the property is a steep slope. Ledge.
I'll go to a picture for you, so you can take a look.
Yeah, I got it.
I don't think they can see see your screen, David, they're gonna let you see mine.
You can't see me?
No, just mine.
Uh. Okay. It's showing it on mine and I'm not seeing yours. What's what's the board seeing, is the board seeing a picture now?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a picture with a Jeep in the driveway and the ledge in the background.
Okay.
Another view. Um, further down the driveway, so you can really see how steep. Uh, backyard grade is, and it takes off uh, pretty quickly um, right from the backyard. Um, and uh. That's another view. Uh, and then a view from the backyard, sorry. Don't mean to make you dizzy. Um. Is sort of, this is. The back wall of the house, you only have um, a few feet um, of patio space, and then you can see that the ledge takes off. In in the background there. Um. It's my understanding from the last meeting, there were a couple of big concerns. Um, one, you wanted to know what the layout of the um, new addition would be. Um. So again, just to reiterate, we're proposing a twenty six by thirty six. Um, addition, it would be a one story addition with basement and garage below. That would require fourteen and a half foot side yard variance. Um, we are still uh, compliant in terms of building coverage, um, the height. Will be compliant, um, we just have to figure out. The exact roof slope, um, but considering it's really only a one story building, it's far below the existing um. Peak of main house, so it will be compliant.
So the garage you built in. You add on what side?
I'm sorry?
You have a dimension for a new garage you build in?
Yes, I have floor plans. I'm just gonna get to them in a second. So. Here we have a proposed, this is a proposed basement and garage layout. Um, this is the existing basement here. Um, there's an existing game room with a door that was originally leading to the exterior, which will now lead into the new garage space. Uh, there'll be a mudroom space in the back. And a new sport storage room or workshop in the back as well. Um, since we'll be eliminating this door, we need to provide an egress window um, for a second means of egress. Uh, from the basement, um, and that'll be through the mudroom space. Um, then on the first floor, um, we're proposing a master suite addition. Um. Which would increase the uh, bedroom count from a four bedroom home to a five bedroom home. But the existing septic is sized as such for a five bedroom home, so there's no um, site work that's required in order to make this upgrade. Um. The intention.
You.
I'm sorry?
How many garages you will have by the time you finish, three? Four.
Uh, four.
One car garage.
Doesn't, two exist, this is a very small garage where honestly, you really can't even open the doors of both vehicles at the same time because. Of the spacing of the garage doors and the size of the garage itself. Um, there's very limited storage um, in the back, you pretty much have a couple of shovels. And some tools that you mount on the wall back here, so this uh. You could call it a two car garage if you want, but um. That's what that is, um, and then there'd be initial two spaces under this this new space. Here. Um. It should be noted as well that the um, existing shed. That's located in the side yard will be removed in order to construct the garage as well. Um, and then from an exterior perspective. Um, this is a general. Look of what the the garage will look like, um, as I said, the roof height will be far below the existing roof. Um, just a couple of garage doors, matching windows to match the rhythm of the front of the house. Um.
But but it look like you have, uh, this is the old garage here?
I'm sorry?
Is that the? The garage underneath look like the furnished space above the garage? That's the old garage?
No, that's the new garage.
This is the new garage here? This is existing.
Okay.
The garage is the hatch portion on the left side of the drawing?
I thought you said, I thought you said you only built in a garage, no second floor.
I said a one story addition. With a garage and basement below.
Oh, so you have one uh.
So this is one story. You generally speaking, a basement isn't considered a store because it's subterraneous. Um. So I mean, you can classify it however you like, but. Uh, building code wouldn't, uh, you know, Connecticut building code wouldn't consider it a three story structure, you're not allowed to have that. Um, but, um, so it is a garage. At ground level. Because of the grade with a one story addition on the first floor of the home, the main floor of the home. Which is a going to be a master suite.
Good. So you have a. You have the square footage for the home?
The existing square footage of the home?
Yes.
Um, true. Um, actually, one second, I have to look it up.
Roughly three thousand two hundred feet, Mr. Chairman.
Roughly two thousand, how much?
Three thousand two hundred.
And the addition will be?
But.
Nine hundred and thirty six square feet.
The garage space. Uh, Sean, the garage space should not exceed fifty percent of the uh. Of the first of the uh. The footing line for the house, right?
Um, garage space. There's a certain amount of garage space permitted based on square footage, this applicant far exceeds that, so. Usually after twenty thousand square feet, every additional five thousand square feet, it titles you to a parking spot, he's at ninety two thousand square feet. He's definitely not i- in that zone. Um, there's no requirement for how much garage space could occupy a home versus habitable. That I'm aware of, uh, the architect might know a little different, but uh, zoning wise, no.
Okay. Any question from the board?
I have several.
Alright, good.
First off, what's the hardship?
Uh, so there's several hardships, um, the first is that, you know, um. One, you know, development on this site is really limited based on the topo- topography of the site. Um, as we noted, there's steep slopes to the back of the property. Um, and there's um. You know, ledge pretty much everywhere on the property in the in the rear, so we wouldn't be able to expand that way. Um. In terms of expanding over the existing uh, driveway area, that would actually create a greater um. Nonconformity, um, additionally, um. The the first floor uh, suite. Is intended so that the applicant and his wife can age in place in their home. Um, the applicant's wife um, has a medical condition that will um. Deteriorate her health over time. So currently, the master suite is on the second floor of the home, which makes her living in this home infeasible. Um, the intent of the master suite is to provide a living space on the first level, um, you can see actually from the driveway. Uh, the existing driveway side, um, that it's a relatively uh, flat area here, and then it drops down. Uh, you can see that in the, actually the front photograph. Um, so making the home handicap accessible for her um, would be uh, very easy to do. As her health deteriorates, as as this area here is very flat, and as you can see, it drops down to the um. To the uh, side of the. Side yard there, um. And the intent of the suite, even though it's large, um, like I said, it's it's basically intended so that this would be um. A suite for her to um, be able to get therapy in, um, if she needed uh, additional uh. Care, she could have that done here as well. And as I said, to provide handicap accessibility, um. Should it be required uh, in the future?
Okay. From personal experience, I had to make my home handicap accessible for my wife. We put in a stair lift, I have recently come across. Information that. They have home elevators, a home elevator would be a whole lot cheaper than this entire project. Why, what, considering the amount of room that's in this house, why couldn't they put in an elevator?
Um. Well, I don't think that that's, you know, um. I mean, the other thing is, is that the 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 square footage of the of the home is in keeping with the other sizes of the 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 homes in the area. The only ho- the only variance that's we're we're requesting is a side yard variance, we're well within the um, you know. Impervious uh, coverage floor area, um, you know, building area coverage, we're well below it, you know, we're we're. A a fifth of what's actually allowed, um.
But the applicant has reasonable use of his property. At the present.
I'm sorry?
The the applicant. Currently has reasonable use of his property.
Um. I mean, I I don't know, because I I think that even, you know, the the garage space is not really. A functionable space, the the driveway is very difficult to maneuver.
No, it isn't, I've been up the driveway.
I was in the driveway.
So was I.
If you have.
I didn't have any trouble with it.
If you have another car parked here. Um. If, hang on, I'll go to the site site plan, if you have another car parked. In here.
The day I was there, there was a Jeep parked in the driveway, I was able to turn around, no problem at all.
You must have a different size car than I do.
No, I have an SUV.
Oh, that that.
Parked in this garage and there are cars parked here. It's, it's very difficult to pull out of this driveway and actually drive down this long driveway.
No, it isn't. I beg to differ. I've been there.
So so thank you, Mr. Sid, in in the general term, I'm not not sure I really understand how a deck on a house is a hardship either, but uh, you know, at the end of the day. I I think we're asking to improve the improve the property for all the reasons that uh, you know, Ms. Fox put on the. On the agenda. Uh, and uh, the only request we're asking from the board is a side yard setback. Which is far away from uh, you know, any encumbrances to the other neighbors, they're all in support.
Uh, according to your application, you're only asking for a garage, not a not a bedroom suite.
Yeah, so uh, I think that's a great point, uh, with the last uh, hearing we had. Uh, and the board asked for some more detail, which uh, we went through time and expense to provide. Uh, and uh, that detail was, you know, are you putting one car garage or two car garage, and are you doing a living space above or not? And so uh, you know, during this time, we engaged with uh, with Stephanie and and had some conversations in the house and. You know, as she said, we wanna retire here, and so uh, a great improvement went to the house would be a main floor master bedroom. Uh, it is an expense, but I think that expense is up to us to decide how to spend our money. Uh, and uh, you know, again, within our neighborhood of twenty four houses, all on two acres ish, all thirty five hundred square feet and above. And all but one other with three car garages and significantly larger three car garages, I think. This improvement puts us in line with also with the rest of the housing in the neighborhood and competitive with the property, so. We're also trying to improve our investment here, uh, and uh, you know, make an investment in our home for long term.
Well, the the bedroom you have above the garage.
Yes, sir.
They're gonna have any separate entrance from the back or no, just?
No.
The the man enters from the house, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now you have to go, you come through this living room area here into the. Into the suite.
Okay. Alright. I don't have any more questions.
I have, I have one. Um, the last time we met, um, I think. One of the things we're gonna come back with is to show us how you're gonna improve the drainage.
Yes, sir.
You know, being that you have a lot of ledge back there, you know, I imagine there's a runoff even before. Um, oh, thi- this this addition, um, and maybe this could be a good opportunity to, you know. To uh, somewhat eliminate that anyways, as 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 best as you can, uh. For that.
Yeah.
There's a letter. There's a letter from the uh.
From Leo Gallagher.
Yes.
From Ralph, yeah.
Ralph, yes.
Yeah, so uh, just if I could explain a little bit here, you see the cross hatching area in the drawing here? That's that's a, an existing curtain drain. That collects all the runoff from the back hill. As well as the leaders from the gutters on the house, with the exception of the two facing the north side here. Uh, and then brings and collects them into a catch basin, as you can see on the drawing in between the driveways. And then dumps it down in the storm drain, uh, uh, in the cul-de-sac. Um. With the uh, with with the concern voiced by our neighbors, the north, the Indigos, in the in the last meeting. Uh, I asked Ralph Gallagher to come out, um, Ralph designed our drainage system and our septic system, and he's done work on the neighbor's house as well. And uh, and Ralph, uh, and we pulled in the neighbors, uh, Lauren Indigo, and we had a review together with uh, with the site. And Ralph's assessment was, you know, m- most of the water from the property. Most of the watershed from the property is collected by that existing curtain drain and dumped into the. Storm and catch basin in between the driveways and the other direction. Uh, there's very little that's coming off into uh, the Indigo's neighboring property, which is actually quite a bit below our grade, it's down at the bottom of the hill. Uh, and uh, what we did is reviewed some some drainage and the existing runoff. And then we designed a plan together with uh, with the Indigos to uh, to improve uh, the drainage further. Collect that in a catch basin, it would be next to the new proposed driveway, and then dump that into the existing storm drain, so. Uh, we can do all we can to help them out on that side. But you know, today eighty five, ninety percent of the watershed on my property goes the other way.
Okay.
The uh, and you know, we just had all that rain in the last month, and I took a seven minute video of the of the water drainage and on the runoff on all the properties, if the board would like to see. Can load it on. We had a good opportunity to really look at what was going on with, uh, you know, what, three, four inches of rain in two days.
But on your screen, you'll see the letter from uh. Ralph Gallagher.
Yeah.
Regarding the meeting that they had and his proposal for the drainage for the new garage.
Okay.
Yeah, and I reviewed this, I sent this to the Indigos as well, and uh, you know, they said Lauren, Lauren was part of that meeting with Ralph and uh, and I continue to. Uh, you know, um, you know, offer our direct support and his involvement in any future designs, so you know, we. Improve his situation as as best we can, he lives at the bottom of the mountain.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that.
Anybody else have a question? Look like everybody happy, okay, uh. Anyone in favor of this application? Anyone in favor?
Mary, did you have some more uh? Comments to read in, or uh, was that from the last meeting?
I'm sorry about that delay, I was. Trying to say something and realized I was muted, um, I don't have anything extra, I only had the one email from the Romanos, who are your neighbors. Saying they had no objection, and I believe we read that uh, the last time. I didn't have anything else. Did you, did you think I should have received something else?
There was also a mail from the president of the homeowners association saying.
Yes, yes, um, I'm sorry, thank you for the reminder, um, let me just find that.
That was from uh, Lou the Hewitt.
All right. Just give me a moment. Mr. Burgess, I am not finding it at the moment. However, I can, I can verify that we did receive an email from the homeowners association and with no objection to your project. I hope that's, that's good enough for the board at this point.
Certainly. Thank you.
All right. I was asking if anyone in opposition for this application? Anyone in opposition? All right. So. Seems to be everybody happy. We have a motion to 23-01.
Make a motion to close 23-01.
A second.
All in favor?
Excuse me?
Hi.
That was Mr. Shapiro and Mr. De Lucia.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
All in favor? Hi. Okay, as, nobody show up for 23-08?
That's correct.
So what do we do with that?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We continue application 23-08 till next, uh, meeting. Next most meeting.
All in favor?
Hi.
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 Right.
So, to go back to the first one. We open 23-08 for vote and discussion. But.
I make a motion to open application 23-061 Delta Avenue for voting session.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hey. Any discussion about that or motion or what?
I make a motion to approve 23061 Delta Avenue. Flappus for H, for RA 20 zone, section 4.8.3, reduce front yard setback from 30 feet to 12.9 feet. And reduce front yard setback on Park Avenue. That is reduce front yard setback from 30 feet to 12.3 feet on Delta Avenue per proposed garage, reduce front yard setback from 30 feet to 25.3 feet on Park. Reduce side setback from 15 feet to 5.9 feet for proposed addition, reduce front setback 30 feet to 22.2 feet on Park and side setback from 15 feet to 13.5 feet for proposed deck. Increase maximum build of coverage from 20% to 23% per plan submitted.
A second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Roll call. Have to have a roll call.
Hi, Mr. Sidetown.
Hi.
Mr. De Lucia.
Hi.
Mr. Rivas.
Hi.
Mr. Roberto.
Hi.
And I say, oh. Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, application 23-07, 18 Lake Road. We open for vote and discussion and emotion.
I make, I make a motion to approve 2307, 18 Lake Road.
No, we're gonna open it first. As they have.
I'll make a motion to open 2307, 18 Lake Road.
Any second?
That's second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Okay. Discussion and question.
All right. I make a motion to approve 2307, 18 Lake Road. RA 20 zone, reduce front yard setback from 30 feet to 12 feet and reduce side yard setback from 15 feet to nine feet for proposed deck.
A second.
Per plan submitted.
A second.
It's a, a quick note, Mr. Chairman and board members, try to work in the, the hardship when you approve an application. So if you're doing it, you'll say, you know, what the reasons were for approving the specific variance. Like.
Good. Can you say what the hardship for that day, Tony?
Uh, I, I believe the hardship is the shape of the lot and that it's a shared, shared access lot.
Small one, okay. All in favor, I was asking. Mr. Sidetown.
Hi.
Mr. De Lucia.
Hi.
Mr. Rivas.
Bye.
Excuse me, Mr. Hannah. We're having a difficult time hearing you. We still need to hear from somebody else. Who else is here?
Me.
Tony, Tony. Me and, and yourself. But but I don't think you're speaking into your microphone.
I was. Yeah, I was speaking, I don't know. I was, uh, speaking online for voting and I started, Mr. Sidetown, yes. And Mr. De Lucia said yes, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Rivas, he stopped talking, so I don't know.
Uh, I, I said yes. I said, ah.
I'm sorry, you know, telling you, so maybe something happened there. Mr. Roberto.
Hi.
To me, though. Hi, okay, I say, I.
Thank you.
Call through.
Thank you. As per plan submitted.
As the chairman.
23-08, Connecticut table for next meeting. 23-09, 15 grand of your drive.
It's been continued, Chairman.
Yeah.
What happened?
Make a motion.
23, that.
Vote on.
23-0. Yeah. Go ahead, Tony, sorry.
Sorry. I make a motion to vote on 23-01. The other two were continued, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Second.
Charlotte Way. And we open it and discussion and voting.
I have, I have something to say. I spent a couple hours today researching the material from our class that we had earlier in the year. Legally, Mr. Burgess does not qualify for a hardship in his case because he has use of his property. However, the.
You have it on.
Will you listen, listen to me till I finish?
Yeah, I'm listening.
The Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities states that we have to approve his application for reasonable accommodations because his wife has MS. And I'm citing from a, a case that was denied and taken to court and lost. So to save the city and the applicant money going through court, I just wanted to make that point known.
But, but Mr. Sidetown, can you wait one second? We don't, we need to open the application first and then.
We already did.
Okay.
We opened it and you asked for discussion.
But he have as you're talking, the way you're talking is if he have a small lot and he built in a big house.
No, I'm talking what the regulations state from the state of Connecticut. I have the book in front of me.
Okay. And he had addition for his house or no?
So if anybody else doesn't have anything to say, I make a motion to approve 23-01, 9 Charlotte's Way, David Burgess. RA 80 zone, section 4.8.3, reduce minimum side yard setback from 40 feet to 25.5 feet for proposed garage addition per plan submitted. The applicant has taken all the necessary safety issues into concern, not only for his family, but his neighbors.
That's the hardship.
That is the hardship, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any second?
My second.
20 seconds. All in, all in favors?
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Sidetown.
Roll call, roll call.
Mr. Sidetown.
Hi.
Yeah. Mr. Roberto.
Hi.
Mr. De Lucia.
Hi.
Mr. Rivas.
Hi.
And I'm sure Hannah say yes, hi. Okay, so approved. All right. That's it, I guess. We're all done. No old business, no new business, no purpose, no matter other matters. We have a motion to adjourn now.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
All in favors?
Hi.
Hi.
I need roll call for that, right? This is the easiest one.